Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, May 15, 2018. I'd like to call the Pittsburgh City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording for this meeting for public broadcast, and I would ask anyone else in the audience who was recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Does anyone wish to do so?
Elizabeth Thaubin, Central Land Press.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Taylor Kuzianian from 283 Canton Street. If I could address the city council.
You'll have an opportunity momentarily.
David Nicholas, 6999, Alpham Road.
Great, thank you. Counselor Gina Tally, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the citizens of our republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Kushtmerek.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
President.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at this time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record. And please, does anyone wish to speak at this time?
Good evening. My name is Carol Taylor Kuzianian from 283 Canton Street. I'm sorry, my petition did not make it to the agenda. It was supposed to be on the agenda.
Unfortunately, I can't permit you to speak at this time if you submitted a petition that'll appear on the next city council agenda. I'd certainly invite you to...
It was confirmed by Amy Green that it was going to be on the agenda last week, and I had seven residents from Canton and Merano Ave come tonight.
I certainly understand, and I apologize. Unfortunately, we can only allow those items appearing on the agenda to be spoken to this evening. So I'd certainly invite you, if the item appears on the next city council agenda, I'd certainly ask and invite you to return and to provide public comment at that time. I'm sorry.
I'd like to thank Chief Mardno for taking the time to speak to these residents and offer a lot of help to us, Merano Ave and Canton Street. He helped us, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Attorney Nicholas.
Again, David Nicholas, 6999, Alpham Road. My wife and I live there. We also own property right across from the library on Main Street in Pittsburgh. Want to speak to the Main Street issue. I apologize I was not able to be here the last time. I was babysitting, and by the time I was relieved, it was after eight o'clock. I did watch most of the meeting last time. I actually quit at 10:00, and when I found out afterwards that the council had voted six to five and then seven to four to vote to keep two-way Main Street, two-lanes on Main Street going in the same direction, I was shocked. And I want to just recap what happened last week and say why I believe that your votes, you should reconsider the vote that you took if you voted to keep it, two lanes going in one direction. It was generally acknowledged by everybody that spoke that two lanes going in one direction provided little, if any, benefit. There was a marginal decrease in safety. There was a marginal decrease in speed, and that was it. That was the sole benefit. What was also recognized is that two lanes, one lane going in one direction was not going to solve the problem for Main Street. And one of the parties that said that was actually the consultants that came and spoke at Fitchburg State last year, and they advocated what was being done, but they privately acknowledged you're not going to solve the problem by having one-direction Main Street. You've got to have two-direction Main Street. And that's where the whole discussion went, having two directions on Main Street, and that's what you really need to have. Everybody that spoke in favor of it, there were two city councilors, the rest of them, the rest of you either were relatively ambivalent, or three or four of you spoke strongly in favor of getting rid of the one-lane, bicycle lane, and having studies in order to develop two-way. The cost to Main Street and the people that are on Main Street, like myself and my wife, and the people that are in our buildings, is significant. It does not make Main Street more attractive for businesses. There is a bottleneck at least once a day, if not twice a day, when it can take as long as three or four stoplights at the upper end of Main Street to get through. Doesn't help people, those wanting to come onto Main Street. It also is not safer. We were, actually got free publicity on the Boston news stations last year as a result of the one-lane Main Street, but it's not the kind of publicity you wanted because it was a road rage incident that was caused by the confluence of the traffic going from two lanes down to one, and it was on for about three separate nights saying what this road rage incident was on Main Street in Pittsburgh. The other, I have myself gone out of the fake club, I'm looking, I've gone out of the fake club parking lot and almost clipped a bicyclist, not because he was going in the right direction in the bicycle lane, because he was going in the wrong direction at a fairly large clip, and I'm looking in the direction I should be looking to see if any traffic is coming. I start out and all of a sudden, boom, there's a bicycle right in front of me, and I had to slam on the brakes coming out of the fake club. The other detriments, the DPW, the cost and the time to put in, remove, move as needed the flower pots, that was universally recognized. The fire department said it is a safety issue for them because of the congestion on Main Street, getting from east to west. Another negative for it.
Attorney Nicholas, your two minutes is up.
I'll be done in just a minute. I really will be done in just a minute.
You have 15 seconds.
I'm not repeating, not repeating stuff. The bike lane is rarely used, and when it was used, that same day that you had your meeting, it was used once, I agree, and it was used by somebody in their mechanized wheelchair going from west to east. That was the one person I saw use it that day.
Attorney Nicholas, your time has concluded. Thank you for your color comment.
There was one, there's only one reason, not just, there's only one, let me just finish, and I'll be done in 30 seconds. There's only one reason.
Sir, your time is concluded.
To reject two-one-lane Main Street, and that is if you're...
Sir, everyone is given two minutes, and I try to do it equitably at this point. You far exceeded your time. I'd ask you to conclude your comments in one sentence.
I'm going to, I'm going to conclude them, and that is if all the grants you were talking about and all the projects you were going to talk, you were talking about are withdrawn because you revert back to two-lanes. If that's not the case, then you should bring it back to two-lanes, rethink your, what was a mistake, and put it back to what all the people, or most of the people on Main Street wanted to be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Mr. Posco.
Thank you. Good job, Dave. I agree with most of his points. So I know, I only have two minutes. So I had a week to think about this, and, you know, I guess I've concluded also that the traffic metrics relating to speed and safety, it's really not supported, and, you know, the thing that gets me is there were never any alternatives suggested for safety reasons or speed issues relative to the, relative to Main Street. I mean, they used the bike lane as a guise, but what about a road diet, which would be narrowing the lanes? You know, some towns use 10 or nine feet. What about some of the technological advanced devices, you know, and simple ones like speed cushions and speed tables, and also the signage? And, you know, to look along Main Street, along that strip, you know, I think I see one, one speed limit sign. I see no slowdown signs. I mean, these are very inexpensive. And the real issue, though, was the Mastiot report that reported no less than 10 safety issues just because of this single lane. So overall, it is not safer. It's bad for business. We've had seven businesses closing and moving since the single-lane trial. The overwhelming response against it for the businesspeople, and the other thing people fail to realize, it's not only a single-lane Main Street. They took away the access from Putnam Street Bridge. So that took a lot of traffic onto Main Street, which now is gone. So Putnam should go back to two-lanes as it was with the single lane, before the single-lane trial. So, you know, there's, I know there's all these studies out there. We shouldn't be relying on a 17-year-old study regarding Main Street, and basically, we need people to go down Main Street, to go downtown. There should be no other routes around Main Street. Two-way is the solution ultimately, but there's plenty of evidence right now that says, put it back to the way it was before the trial and open up Putnam Street Bridge. So I would like you to consider that going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Posco. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Good evening.
Hi, Mary Giannetti, resident, 40 Village Crossing and business owner, Morin Square Diner, corner of Lunenburg, Main Street, and Myrtle Ave. And I'd like to speak in support of petition 047-18, which is to remove the "Do Not Enter" sign going into Myrtle Ave and allowing for a right-hand turn. As I mentioned earlier in the public safety meeting, for 23-plus years, my husband and I have watched the traffic pattern on this corner. And as a result of that "Do Not Enter" sign, we have seen some pretty creative ways that people try to get into either our business, go onto Myrtle Ave, and north of Main up to the college area. If you're traveling on Summer Street and you want to get to those places that I just mentioned, we see folks come onto Main Street, they'll go into the 7-Eleven parking lot and pull a U-turn, and then come in, or they'll go up, you know, towards the college area. Alternately, they may take a right onto Lunenburg Street, they stop to make a U-turn, that then backs up, you have all this traffic behind you waiting, you make that U-turn, and then you cut through our parking lot to go up to Myrtle or to come to our business, which would be a good thing. But at either of those scenarios I just mentioned to you, what's happening is our parking lots are used as the thoroughfare. So the other thing that we see is we do see lots of people making that right-hand turn because that is the most logical and common sense to approach coming into our business or to get up to, if you're a resident, on Myrtle Ave. And lots of times, they do that. Occasionally, they are stopped by a police officer, and in the event they're stopped by a police officer and they ask, "How do I get in?", they're told, "Go through the 7-Eleven and cut through." I don't think that's the best approach, and it doesn't seem very business-friendly to say that there's really no way that a person can come into your business. So I ask that you consider this petition forward you, forward to you, and to allow, I think that will improve the traffic flow for that lower Main Street area. It will reduce using the parking lots and will help to access up Myrtle Ave to the college area.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public forum at this time? Good evening.
Peter, my name's Ismael Santiago. I live at 71 King Street in Pittsburgh. I'm also here to speak in support of petition 04718. I work for 7-Eleven. I'm one of the area supervisors, and I've actually worked for Tedeschi Food Shops as well as Store 24 for the last 20 years. I've actually supervised that location as a store manager and now supervise it as an area manager. I'd like to speak in agreement of also removing the "Do Not Enter" sign. From what I understand, Myrtle Ave is a two-way street up until that point, and on many occasions, that's what people are doing. They're cutting through our parking lots and just to circumvent the "Do Not Enter" sign, and they're driving up and down the street, getting to where they want to go. Either way, it's a safety concern for our customers, and many of those customers are residents of Pittsburgh. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, if there are no objections, we'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening and took up the following two matters. First was for a reappointment for the Board of Registarians of Voters, term to expire April 1, 2021, of Ms. Ellen Hughes. That was passed by a vote of four to zero. And the next is a new appointment for student police officer to be effective June 4, 2018, Mr. Ismael Sanchez. At this time, I'd like to invite Chief Mardno and Mr. Sanchez to join us at the center table. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Counselor. Good evening, Counselors. It's my pleasure tonight to present to you Ismael Sanchez. Ismael is going to, with his appointment this evening, is going to be attending the next Full-Time Academy in June. His appointment is coming from a departure we had in our last class, the council-approved police officers for the last class there, and now, and we ended up losing the candidate. So Ismael is replacing that candidate. Ismael is a resident of Pittsburgh. He's a father of two. Ismael graduated from the Reserve Intimate Academy in Boylston. He's completed all the requirements to become a full-time police officer. Currently, he's pursuing a degree at Mount Wachusett Community College in Criminal Justice. One of the skill sets that really caught our attention is Ismael works as a skills counselor at Luck Crisis Center here in Pittsburgh. He's been training with our department for the past 10 months. I find him to be an exceptional candidate. He's going to add significant value to the police department, and we're wishing him the best of luck during the next 26 weeks of training at the Full-Time Academy.
I take a motion to accept the Appointments Committee's report. Second?
I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee's report, and for Mr. Ismael Sanchez to be sworn in. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Congratulations, Counselors.
Thank you. I heard you say that. That's what I didn't hear. I said that just for you. I know you did. And I want to say thank you.
Congratulations. We're going to have you sworn in right after this. Absolutely.
You live on Mount Wachusett. Is that right, Don?
Yes. Congratulations.
And notice, everyone, the three-piece suit, very sharp dress or two.
Who's he with? Your one?
I don't know.
I raise your red hand to me after me. I solemnly promise and swear.
I solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all duties.
Perform and discharge all duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a student police officer.
As a student police officer.
Effective June 4.
Effective June 4.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We'll now hear a report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records. They appear to be in order.
Motion to accept your part of the motion.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. This evening, we have three letters and communications from his honor, the mayor. All three are reappointments. The first for Mr. Andrew Van Hozenga as a member of the Planning Board for a term to expire January 1, 2021; for Ms. Paula Karen as a member of the Planning Board for a term also to expire January 1, 2021; and for Ms. Sharon Tardif as a member of the Disability Commission for a term to expire June 30, 2019. Those will be sent to the Appointments Committee. Now returned to the agenda. Next, we have counsel as a whole committee, oh, I apologize. Next, we have annual reports. 14018, annual report, Pittsburgh Police Department for the year 2017. I'd like to invite Chief Mardno and Ms. Andrews to join us.
Thank you again, Counselors, accompanied tonight by, with Kristi Fisher, who's the author of this report. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council as a whole this evening. It's always a privilege to present to the council and to the mayor's office the annual report of the Pittsburgh Police Department. What you see in these 47 pages is the success and dedication and hard work that is done each and every day by the men and women of the Pittsburgh Police Department. Some of these statistics that we're reporting this year are just astonishing, some that I'd like to just present to the council and the viewing public. You know, we look at our numbers and we deploy our forces based on statistical data, and some of the statistical data, what it's telling us is how safe of a community Pittsburgh is. I'm not going to say we don't have our issues. We have our issues, and we address our issues, and we talk about our issues. But when you look at the historical data, we were looking, for instance, on Part I offenses, the most violent crimes any community can see, the crimes that are reported by the FBI. Last year, we saw a decrease in, of Part I crimes in the city of Pittsburgh at 10%. More importantly was the study, we saw a five-year average. Over a five-year average, violent crime in the city of Pittsburgh has been reduced by 25%. That's astonishing. It's numbers like that, you know, I presented the council with the full package. There is a lot of data in this package. Like I says, it outlines exactly what we do day in and day out, whether it's traffic-related issues, whether it's fighting the opioid crisis, dealing with mental health issues. A couple of items that I'd like to point out to the counselors, you know, one area that really jumps out at me is the number of arrests that the Pittsburgh Police Department makes in any given year. Last year, we saw another reduction in our arrest numbers. Previously last year, I spoke in front of the council and told the council, it was the first time in my history as a police officer, 31 years, that we made less than 1,000 arrests. And this year, I'm reporting actually lower than that. Our arrests have been declining over the years. I attribute those declining in arrests to the level of training that we provide our police officers in the city. The level of training that we produce, I mean, we do in excess of 15,000 to 20,000 hours of training for the police officers working in the city. And it's that type of training that is giving your police officers the tools to make decisions on the street that we can make decisions without making an arrest, whether it's utilizing some type of de-escalation situation or just talking to people in a different manner. So we're at a level of training that's starting to be reflective in our, in our statistical data, which is extremely exciting. And with the support of the council and the full support of the mayor's office, we'll continue to fully fund our training. In fact, we're adding to our training with council approval. It's money well-spent, and it's being reflected in the numbers that you're going to be seeing in front of you this evening. The last thing that I put in here different than last year is on page 47. I'd like to highlight the hard work that this young lady does next to me. We write and we apply for all our grants individually at the Pittsburgh Police Department. We don't have a grant writer. Kristi is our grant writer, and she's a very good one. Last year, the Pittsburgh Police Department was awarded $585,000 in grants. Currently, the Pittsburgh Police Department is managing almost $1 million in grants, $900,000 in grants. That's the efforts being put forth by the police department to secure funding and not utilizing taxpayer dollar to create the best police force available. With that said, this, like I said, this is an extremely long document. This is 47 pages. If any council wants a hard copy, I will provide you one. Just send me an email, and I will, I will provide you with a hard copy. It was a little easier to do electronically. I'm very proud of these statistics. We still have a long way to go, but with, with the men and women that work in that police department, serving the city each and every day, nothing is impossible, and it's my privilege to present to you tonight this annual report. And if, Counselors, are there any questions that I could speak to briefly? I know time is an essence, whether myself or Kristi, if we can answer some questions, I'd be more than happy to take them.
Counselor Boishman.
Chief, number one, I'll take a hard copy. That's number one. Number two, I got to ask you a question. With crime going down, can, maybe you don't know the answer, maybe you do. Can you tell me or to people, why we get this stigma about Pittsburgh? Because every time you go out, they say, "Oh, Pittsburgh, it's bad, it's a rough area." But our records, your records show that crime, because I read part of it, your records are going down, and I saw that.
Perception of fear has taken decades to get to the point where it was. I would disagree with you. I believe the city is moving in the right direction, and we're eradicating that perception of fear in the city. And these numbers speak clearly to that, that Pittsburgh is, like any other mid-sized urban community in the state, this is a safe place to live, work, and play, and we're committed to public safety with the officers that we have in the police department. You know, perception, we're going to be battling it forever, but through different organizations, work through the ICE Committee, getting rid of some blight, we're moving in that correct direction, and this annual report shows just that, that the city is definitely moving in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Counsel Green.
Yes, Chief, I would like to take this opportunity to commend you and your workforce on the work that you've done identifying the opioid crisis in our area, and more importantly, the training that you have provided for your staff on dealing with our residents that may have mental health issues. So I want to take this public time to say that I appreciate that because it is, it's not, it's not easy. So I appreciate you dedicating the time and effort to work with those residents in our community.
And just quickly on that comment, Counselor, we were just notified two days ago. Pittsburgh is one of four, and I mean, four communities in the state of Massachusetts that have been recognized by the International Chiefs of Police Association for our efforts, what we put forward on mental health crisis, mental health intervention, and the way we handle mental health issues within the city. I was planning on doing a much larger story in the future, but since you brought it up, it's something to really say that we're one of four communities in the state that are moving in that direction.
Thank you. I commend your effort.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Just quickly, is this posted online?
It will be. I started doing that two years ago, three, times flying by. That was a priority of mine when I became chief. To create complete transparency, I want every citizen in the city that can look at this police report, analyze it, and if they have questions, they can call my office with those questions.
Thank you.
Chief, just truly staggering to hear some of those statistics, including a 10% reduction in Part I offenses, and really just credit to you and your entire department. You know, I think beyond the statistics, too, beyond the incredible, you know, reduction over the past decade, and in particular, over the past five years that we've seen, I'd say, you know, we have a police force that is quickly becoming representative of the population of the city of Pittsburgh. I think it's fostering an inclusive environment and a trusting relationship and partnership with the police department in our communities, and I think that goes, it goes a long way. And certainly, $1 million in grants coupled with increased resources, you know, to give your officers both the training and the resources they need to succeed, I think, I think it's incredible. And, you know, I was excited to hear you say, when I asked before the meeting, you know, "Do you want to speak to this, or do you want us to just read, read the item?", and Chief said to me, you know, "I'll stand on that report. I want to speak to it, and do you want, do you want to field questions? I'll happily field questions." And that's, that's an exciting point for us to be at. I'm sure, you know, chiefs of the past didn't always want to have to field questions. You know, I think beyond the statistics too, beyond the incredible, you know, reduction over the past decade, and in particular, over the past five years that we've seen, I'd say, you know, we have a police force that is quickly becoming representative of the population of the city of Pittsburgh. I think it's fostering an inclusive environment and a trusting relationship and partnership with the Police Department in our communities. And I think that goes, it goes a long way. And certainly, a million dollars in grants coupled with increased resources, you know, to give your officers both the training and the resources they need to succeed, I think, I think it's incredible. And, you know, I was excited to hear you say, when I asked before the meeting, you know, do you want to speak to this, or do you want us to just read, read the item? And Chief said to me, you know, I'll stand on that report. I want to speak to it. And do you want, do you want to field questions? I'll happily field questions. And that's, that's an exciting point for us to be at. I'm sure, you know, chiefs of the past didn't always want to have to field questions. You know, there's tough, tough questions and tough answers sometimes in these type of reports. And for you to get to the point where you're there and you're saying, I want to champion this, I think we've come a long way, and I think that's due in no small part to you, Chief. And, Ms. Fisher, you know, thank you. I know the incredible amount of effort that goes into compiling statistics. That's not an easy thing to do. I'm sure we flipped through it for 20 minutes, and we looked for the quick highlights, you know, and, you know, I don't think that quite does justice to the work that you do. And I know many of these grants we don't get, because, you know, we get, do in large part of the work that you put into those statistics. So, thank you so much. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to accept 14018.
Motion to accept the report and place it on file with the city clerk.
I have a motion to accept, and second to accept 14018 and place on file with the city clerk's office. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Counsel as a whole committee, meeting of May 8th, 2018, which met to take up the following one item, 24217. Counselor Marcusine Italian, Counselor Michael Kouschmerich, that a vote be taken by the city council as a final determination as to Main Street's permanent traffic flow is outlined in the enclosed petition. And the recommendation from the committee was to retain the one-lane Main Street scenario with the intent to study and pursue a two-way Main Street traffic configuration by a vote of seven in favor and four opposed.
Move to hold petition 24217 at the request and of Counselor Joel Caddy.
Second.
I have a motion and second to hold 24217. Speaking to the motion.
Speaking to the motion.
Speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman.
I'm not against holding this for Joel Caddy, but I just want the council to know, what we do for one, we do for all. So, if next time somebody wants to hold because they can't be here, then we should hold a petition for them too. So, I just want that clear. I'm not against holding it, but I want to make sure everybody, if anybody has the same problem, they can make a meeting, and they can be, they can hold a petition too.
Thank you, Counselor Boishman. Counselor Zarela.
Yeah, I think, I'm all in favor of moving this along expeditiously, but especially if we may reconsider the vote of the committee. I think it's only appropriate that Counselor Caddy be here for that, especially given that it was his initial petition in the first place. It seems that if the result of the vote rides on who is able to attend, that doesn't strike me as the right way for it to come out.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Well, I'm going to go against the grain here. I'm against holding it. There have been instances in the past where there have been specific requests, Counselor Boishman touched on it, where we held at councilor requests, but not all the time. My only concern is, you know, what if a councilor next week can't come for whatever reason? We going to hold it again? I'm ready to act on this now. We went through extensive discussion and debate last Tuesday. It's no disrespect to Counselor Caddy's absence, I'm just saying, I mean, Counselor Boishman has a point. If we do it for one, we got to do it for all. And past precedent, it's been very murky as to when we do it and when we don't do it. So, if we're going to do it for him, and one of us can't make next week's meeting, then that person can say, hold it again. And then we got to wait another two weeks or four weeks. I'm not in favor of holding it, because I believe everybody's positions are made quite clear. I am ready to act on this now, and I want to stress to the council very simply. Last week, I said that I felt that this council was being strong-armed into accepting one lane. President Kouschmerich felt the need to correct me and say that he didn't feel that that was the case. And I wanted to clarify my remark and say, I don't believe the councilors were strong-arming others within this body to do this. I felt the city was. And I don't believe that this was a true pilot. I don't believe it was a true test run to start. When they implemented one lane, it was here to stay. We were never going back. And if we hold this and then vote on it the next time and keep the one lane, I understand there was a crumb thrown in this motion that said we can study two-way. I got news for people. We stay with one lane, they're not going to pursue two-way. If we go back to two-lane the way it was, then we're forcing them to look at two-way. I guarantee you, they're not going to look at two-way. They're going to stick with one lane, and they're going to pursue that Mass Works grant, and that's the end of it, even though all the data we received, whether it's crash data, resident surveys, business surveys overwhelmingly said, go back to the way it was and figure out the rest. And we're not doing that. So, I will vote against holding this. I want to vote to vote against the recommendation, and that's just my position, and I hope Counselor Caddy does not take any offense to that. Thank you.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. I second the motion, just the discussion. Doesn't mean I'm in favor of it. It's coming on.
Counselor Zarela.
I'd like to address two of the point, two of the valid points that Counselor Gina Tally made. One is just the question of when we hold and when we don't. In my view, there are two factors in particular that make it appropriate in this instance. One is simply the narrow margin of the vote, where the presence or absence of a single councilor could very well be the determinant factor. But the second is that this was a long-planned absence of Counselor Caddy's, long before he knew that this vote was scheduled. This isn't a matter of someone calling out sick or, you know, having a business meeting. I'd also like to mention that I agree with Counselor Gina Tally that it would absolutely not be in accord with, I think, the will of almost anyone on the council here if we stay with one lane. I made the motion that ultimately was approved by the committee, and I want to emphasize, if we do approve it tonight or in the future, that the crux of that motion was the move to two directions. Staying as one lane in the interim was the incidental aspect of it. I envisioned the motion as being an instruction from the council to the Community Development Office to pursue two-way aggressively. And I believe, I've spoken to Mr. Skorowski, I believe that that's how he understood it as well. So, I would just like to reemphasize that if, in fact, it turns out that it, if it appeared that we were stalling out on one lane and sort of deliberately dragging our feet on going to two-way, it would be a finger snap vote for me to go back the other way.
Counselor Gina Tally.
So, I understand that was, I actually expected you to say that. And the way I see this is, there's no timetable for when that's going to happen. We have concrete evidence right now, it's not working. And if we keep it for a year, two years, three years, while we pursue two-way, we're still keeping in place something that's not working. I look at this from an economic driver standpoint, more than a safety standpoint. And the businesses were overwhelmingly polled, as you know, counsel, doing the polling, that they're not for this.
Mm-hmm.
I feel it is more effective on our part if we all believe two-way is a viable solution, or that's something that should be entertained, that we revert back, which will then force the city to do this. Keeping it one lane while they pursue it, we're holding on to a traffic flow pattern that people don't like. That's why I didn't support it. And I want to make it very clear to everybody, to win my vote two years ago to do this implementation, the major selling point was, it is very easy and cost-effective to make it one lane, and it's very easy and cost-effective to put it back. And I got the impression from the moment the meeting started, that was not an option that the city was going to entertain, going back. And I want to point out again, what was eye-dropping, what was interesting to me is, not once in that entire presentation, did anybody mention the surveys that were done that didn't paint this in a good light. And the crash data was, was very small in terms of improvement on Pritchard, the Pritchard area, but not on the north and main side. It got a lot worse. But no one wanted to point that out until we had Chief Bardino come up and talk about it. So, my motion last week to make it two-lane again was not because I support two-lane. It's because I want to force this city to give concrete evidence as to why or why we cannot do two-way, and then we can go back to revisiting one way, one lane again, because, again, the whole selling point on this was cost-effective and very easy to implement. If it wasn't that case, we wouldn't have done this, I would like to think. So, if we stick with this motion, we hold it, we don't, I don't know. I have no confidence that we're going to arrive at a solution within at least a year or two. And if we, so I don't want to keep something that's not working. Put it back, force the city to study hard the two-way option, then we assess what that study says, and then we say, okay, we can't do it, or we can, and go from there. Again, this was a test run. It was a test run. It was never meant to be permanent unless the data said it shouldn't be. And the data says it shouldn't be. And if we're going to ignore the data, then...
Counsel, so we're debating, and I know Counselor Zarela would also like to speak afterwards. We're debating whether or not to hold it. We haven't even, you know, we don't even have the question before us as to whether or not we're for or against the recommendations by the committee. So, Counselor Zarela, if you'd permit, I'd like to put this to a vote of whether or not to hold, because it seems like we're now debating the merits of the petition, not the merits of hold versus...
Correct terminology?
There would be a, there would be a move to previous question, I believe.
Move to previous question.
That said, I have a motion and second to hold 24217. All those in favor, please raise your hands in favor of holding. Counselors Fleming, Squalia, Clark, and Zarela.
Four.
Four and an opposition. Counselors Green, Gina Tally, Donnelly, Kouschmerich, Walsh, and Boishman. Motion does not carry. 24217 is before you. Speaking to the motion, or there is no motion on the floor, but Counselor Zarela.
So, I was smiling a moment ago, because I think Counselor Gina Tally and I are coming to opposite conclusions for the exact same reasons. As I said at the last meeting, the reason I switched my vote to stay with one lane was because I thought it would create more of an incentive to move expeditiously towards two lanes, two-way rather. And Counselor Gina Tally wants to move it back to two lanes, because it will create more pressure to move expeditiously towards two-way. So, we're, I think we're at, we're aiming at the same thing. And that being said, there's really only four things that are clear to me on this issue, where I see a clear right and a clear wrong. One is we want to aim at two-way Main Street. That's the end goal. Two is I believe that we do not want to create a bypass to Main Street as long as it is still one-way, because that takes traffic away from businesses and makes it nearly impossible for any new business to gain recognition and word of mouth and whatnot. Three is, no one likes the bike lane and the planters. I don't think I heard a single, I think I heard two people say that they liked the bike lane but didn't see it get used much, and no one liked the planters. And the fourth is, if we return to two-lane in the process of going towards two-way, we should figure out something to do in the interim to improve pedestrian safety, whether it be other traffic calming measures or what have you. Beyond that, though, I will freely admit, I'm at a loss, because I've heard strong arguments on both sides of the one-lane, two-lane thing. I was going back and forth all last meeting, and I said so. And ultimately, I went with my gut and tried to propose a compromise solution, but after hearing from more people over the last week, I'm less sure now than I was then, and I wasn't that sure then. When I feel like I know how I should vote, I'll do it, and I'll defend it. But when I don't know, I got to just admit, I don't know. So, at this point, I will vote for any motion that meets those four criteria that I listed. I do not feel that I have strong enough reasons to champion one or the other interim solution, but I do want to stress that either one, what we're debating is the interim solution, not the end game. And I agree 100% with Counselor Gina Tally on that aspect of it. I do not want to see us stall on one lane one-way or two-lane one-way. I want to see us get to two, two lanes both ways as fast as we can.
Counselor Walsh.
I agree with the four points that Counselor Zarela has just made. I think that the, I agree with the ultimate solution being, looking at a two-way Main Street. And in the interim, I think if, if, by changing it back to the way it was, and then changing it to two-way Main Street, I think it's just going to be very confusing. I think, you know, staying with the status quo and forcing, you know, the city to take a look at a two-way Main Street with due haste would be the solution that I would be in favor of.
Counselor Squalia.
So, the problem I have with going back to the way it was is the way it was before didn't work either. We've been talking about this since the '60s, the '70s, the '90s, when they commissioned this two-way traffic study, and again, a few years ago, when it was brought up again because of the safety concerns with the two-lane, one-direction Main Street, you know. So, going back doesn't solve that problem. So, what we have now is the one lane with, as Counselor Zarela noted, it's not the one lane or the two lanes. It's what is the effect, the overall effect that we are trying to create. A safer Main Street, a Main Street where traffic isn't backed up everywhere, a Main Street where there are less accidents to planters, a Main Street where the bike lane, if there is a bike lane, is safer. And we do have studies with, that we were given, with the Mass DOT Road Safety Audit specifically addresses the problems with that we have currently. And it specifically notes the suggested and recommended course of action to remedy the situation that we have now, to fix those problems, as noted, you know, one lane or two lane doesn't matter. It's the problems of the safety, it's the problems of the traffic backups, and the traffic backups that are causing accidents. So, you know, this road safety audit included the DPW Commissioner, the Planning Director, multiple, you know, Tom and Amy from the Community Development Office. It included Chief of Police, the Chief of Fire, and it specifically addresses the problem points. I would like to see us, while looking at the two-way Main Street study, implement the changes as recommended in the Mass DOT study in the interim. Instead of keeping it the way it is and status quo, or going back to the way it was, there is an intermediate where we can implement small changes to the existing while we look at the two-way Main Street. And on the note of the two-way Main Street, the study was found by the City Clerk's Office, and Liz Murphy, was it?
Liz Keys.
Liz, Liz Keys, from the City Clerk's Office, the 2002, presented to the council at that time, the two-way study. And I'd just like to note the quick synopsis of that. The pros, it incorporates the recommendations of earlier downtown urban development study. This is for two-way traffic on Main Street and Boulder Drive. Pro, reduces through-traffic flow volume on Main Street. Pro, makes businesses on Main Street more accessible. And the cons, it restricts deliveries on Main Street. Parking maneuvers cause disruption in traffic flow on Main Street. Future residents of second-floor housing on Main Street, current residents now, cannot double-park while unloading shopping purchases. Left turns from side streets and driveways will be extremely difficult due to two-way traffic volumes on Main Street and Boulder Drive. And then here, it says, large amounts of vehicles per day will utilize Boulder Drive in the vicinity of the sharp curve at the westerly end. The left-turn lane from Boulder Drive on the west-end study area will be located at the sharp horizontal curve. Traffic volumes... Traffic volumes along Boulder Drive increase significantly, and the phasing of the improvements will be restricted. So we do have a 17-year-old study that we can refer to as well, which also suggested the total cost of two-way Main and two-way Boulder to be $2.7 million 17 years ago. It also suggested in this study that further studies were suggested for multiple intersections around the area due to impacts, unknown impacts of the changing of the traffic direction, like we're seeing today with the changing of the one-lane, the traffic impacts further down the road. Thank you.
Counselor Green?
I will hold by my original vote. And when I made that vote, it was very clear to me that we were voting with the intent to pursue the two-way Main Street configuration that would be brought forward by the Community Development Department zoning, planning, all of our department heads. To do that, to take care of those, I think, very few issues that are, that have arisen in our pseudo-pilot program from one-lane, one-way Main Street. But my intent was always to get to the gold standard of being two-way, two-lane, two-way on that. So I will, I will hold firm with my vote that I want the departments that are going to step up and do this work to do that work. I don't know how quickly, and I don't know if there's anybody here tonight from those departments that can speak on how quickly those issues can be addressed to continue to move this project. I don't think that the intent has always been to stall out the project. And again, moving towards the ultimate two-lane, two-way.
All right.
Hi, Tom.
So Mr. Skrowski, I'll permit you to just address that question in a moment. Pittsburgh State University also approached me after the last meeting. Jay Brey, the Vice President there, informed me that whenever the council takes a vote, whichever direction it so chooses to pursue, if it so chooses to move in the direction that the motion was currently written, they would, then as soon as a final vote is taken, they would then pursue a feasibility study and pay for and finance a feasibility study for two-way, two-directional Main Street. But they said, obviously, we will not pursue that option until we have some clear direction. These are extremely expensive studies, and these come at, you know, at the stake of student tuition dollars and fees every time they pay for these. So they're looking for some direction in order to pursue that. They can't do that expeditiously until we give them some direction. So that was a gracious offer they've made, so that, you know, that's essentially a feasibility study in every direction they're offering here. It's just a matter of, you know, kind of dependent upon what we choose to do. That said, Mr. Skrowski, if you could kind of narrowly address Counselor Green's questions.
Good evening, Counselors.
So I guess two points that you had made there. One is how we're going to adjust, address the tweaks to one-lane as it exists currently. And we have taken some of the road safety audit, the more sort of low-hanging fruit, easily implementable suggestions, and taken them into action. And also this week, we worked with DPW Commissioner, Chief Roy, Chief Martinot, to implement, or to create a plan for how we're going to take on some other tweaks, removing the planters, removing the bike lane, are both ones that we've agreed on, and we're just bringing two engineers to have them vet it fully and potentially recapture some parking as a result. So those are sort of the short-term tweaks to one-lane. And in terms of the two-way question, we were actually meeting with traffic engineers to talk about that exact topic today. I've told you this last week, I stand by it today. Two-way Main Street is the optimal traffic solution for Main Street. The question really is, is it possible? And there's a reason that it was presented to council on those studies originally, and that was in 2002, and nothing's happened since. So we're trying to make sure it's feasible and to work through mutually, you know, I think there's a lot of different opinions here, but I think we all agree on how we want to move Main Street forward, and we're trying to find the best solution to do that. We're moving expeditiously at it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Skrowski. That's Green, all set.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Dina Tally.
So it's been stated that two-lane Main Street in one-way wasn't working. Says who? The safety aspect, as the data suggested, did not exponentially improve. And all the businesses that were polled, a great majority of them said, it is impacting their ability to do business. I guess I look at this from an economic standpoint, not a safety standpoint. We always talk about wanting to encourage business growth on Main Street. This is having the opposite effect. That's not me saying it, that's the businesses that were polled. So when we talk about going back to two-lane, and I hear all the word being emphasized all the time, we're going back to two-lane, it's like, it almost gives the aura that we want to go back to the status quo. I want to do what the businesses are saying we should do. Everyone agrees two-way is the optimal solution. We had something in place prior to this experiment that the business community, I would like to think based on the statistics, are more agreeable to than one-lane. If they don't like one-lane, you have to assume they want to go back to the way things were. That's why I suggested going back to the way things were, researching two-way option, and then doing our homework after that. The problem, in my opinion, is, and this is no criticism on Mr. Skorski or his department, is, we didn't do that study or that option first before we did this test run. That would have been helpful. Then we would have had concrete data on what that would entail, including the one-lane, and then we could make a more informed decision. Instead, we did one-lane. It was sold to us that after the statistics were given, we can make a decision whether to keep it or stay, stay or go back at minimal cost. The data suggests it's not working, but yet we're going to stick with it. And no one knows right now how long that'll be. So in the meantime, businesses will continue to suffer, and that's not what I want to have happen. I'm sure it's not what everybody in this room wants to have happen. So I want to drive the issue to get a concrete answer as to whether two-way is feasible or not. And then, yes, if we need to go back to one-way with tweaks, fine. I don't know when that'll be, I don't know how much that'll cost, but what we had in place before this experiment is preferable to the business community and even the residents that were polled in that survey than where we're at right now. And, and I cannot stress enough, ladies and gentlemen, it was sold to us that we could easily revert back. No one said two years ago, well, if you want to revert back, that's backwards thinking, whatever that means. You know? I am not in the business of hurting the businesses on Main Street. This is hurting the businesses on Main Street. Time to admit, it's not working, go back to the way it was, research the optimal alternative, and then we have all of our ducks in a row between the one-lane Main data and the two-way Main data, then we can make a better informed decision on where to go. But in the meantime, I don't want to stick with something that's not working. And I know the city's invested with one-lane, they're invested into it. I could tell from the presentation last week, the mayor, they want this to stay. All right? Guaranteed. So that's why I said last week, the fix was in. This was never going back to two-lane. Wasn't. And in the meantime, we're going to upset a lot more businesses, who actually were polled and said they don't like it, and we're going to ignore them. I'm not going to ignore them. And the last thing I'll say on this is, I want to separate two-way from the discussion, because I've had some people say to me, well, how do you know two-way is viable? I said, I don't know. No one's been able to tell me. And until I know whether it is or not, I'm not going to stick with a pattern that's failing. In that same study in 2002, what wasn't brought up is, there was a subject matter expert at that meeting in the minutes who stated the following, who also did a study in 1996 for Pittsburgh. And he said, his recommendation was for a two-way Main Street and a three-lane Boulder Drive to include a center-turn lane, and that his recommendation remains the same today. He said, the primary reason for the recommendation was his determination that most of the travelers on Main Street were there due to lack of any alternative. He said that allowing a two-way Main Street would offer both decreased speed and increased pedestrian safety, creating a positive atmosphere for private investment in retail shops. And the pro, which is a big pro, is it grants better access to businesses on downtown. I mean, I read that and I stop right there, because we're always talking about revitalizing downtown. There was also a study done in 1999 for Pittsburgh by Design. It was a report on downtown street conversion from one-way to two-way, December of 1999. The results of the survey stated the following. The vast majority of communities surveyed reported that changing downtown streets from one-way to two-way traffic operation was very positive, particularly for business development. None of the communities reported tangible negative effects because of the change. In almost every case, the conversion of core business streets from one to two-way was seen as a trade between mobility, traffic speed and volume for access and exposure. Communities reported improved business, increased investment, better distribution of traffic, and more pedestrian friendly, and a general feeling of improved livability and quaintiness. So, but again, we don't know if we can do it. So let's go back to what it was, which was the intent of the test. If the test fails, you go back and re-look at your options. I cannot in good conscience stick with something that the business community overwhelmingly is against. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman?
Tom, you say you're going to make some tweaks. Are you taking the bike lane off of Main Street and putting it on the right side, or are you keeping it on the same side?
Taking it out. The plan is to take it out altogether.
Take it out altogether. So there's one thing, the bike lane gone. And the planters are gone, right?
Correct. Again, in the plan. It's been submitted to our engineers.
You know, I want to say something. The only thing, I understand what Counselor Dina Tally is saying, and I agree, there's no evidence. What I read, everything I have read since I've been fighting against this one-lane Main Street, says everything that you're trying to accomplish, to slow down the traffic, to bring people downtown, and to improve the neighborhood, I call it a neighborhood, downtown, by bringing in more stores. But I want, so we're not misleading the people of Pittsburgh. I want to make it very clear, from what I read, that this, just because we, if we do change it back to two-lane, you ain't going to see a boom. There's no guarantee there's going to be a boom. Everything I read says, there's no guarantee there's going to be a boom. Nothing. All it does, it slows down the traffic, makes it a lot more safer, and you start seeing more development on your downtown than you would with one-lane. My only question is, I wouldn't mind doing what you said, but I want a time limit. How long do we wait? That's what my thing. Are we going to wait five years? Are we going to wait one year? Say we give them one year. Say one year, we want some answers. That's what I'm looking for. I want to know how long. A time date from August 17th to, to 2018, to August 17th, 2019. A time limit. Not say we're going to wait five years, six years, seven years, eight years, nine years. A time limit.
Tom, is it feasible that within a one-year calendar period from the date this vote is consummated, that Pittsburgh State could successfully conduct a feasibility study?
Well, absolutely. I mean, so when we met with engineers today, and, you know, we are moving concurrently, and I know Pittsburgh State, you know, the current engineers they're working with are also, you know, willing to explore this, and the city can also support it as well. We have a Streetscape Fund through our CDPG program. We'd love to partner with the university on it. But we met with another designer today, and they, we made it very clear to them that we want to get this set up for the August 10th deadline for Mass Works. And, you know, I'm sure you all remember the three options that I had given. The third option is to keep things the way they are with some tweaks, with a sunsetting provision, and again, not for me to come back to and beg you to keep things the way it is, but to say, if we don't accomplish our objectives, it would just go back to two-lanes, one-direction. So again, keeping that incentive that Counselor Dina Tally's looking for, but my biggest concern is what Counselor Walsh had mentioned. I think it's very confusing for us to go back and forth and back again. And I think we're, it sounds like we're interested in moving forward, and I'm answering more than that, so I'll stop now.
Tom, now, if we wouldn't went to the recommendation of the university, making Boulder Drive two-way, how we were going, are we going to get grants for that, to make Boulder Drive two-way?
Good question. So I think it's really, there are three main changes that would happen if Boulder Drive were to become two-way. So one would be near the Upper Common at the western intersection of Main and Boulder. The second would be at the lights at Putnam and Boulder, and the third would be at Main and Boulder on the eastern portion, near Montori. So for two of the three, at the very least, and potentially for all three, we feel like we'd be pretty competitive for a Mass Works grant to make that happen. At the same time, we have a really interesting moment here. Part of the reason that Mass DOT did their road safety audit was because, as part of their audit, they actually looked to implement major changes connected to the bridge redesign. So they looked at those intersections that they did, not because they were doing an analysis of one-lane Main, but they were seeing, what are some traffic improvements we could make as part of the bridge project? And what we were going to propose to Mass DOT is the easternmost portion where Main and Boulder connect is actually something that they could support us with if we were to move to a two-lane Boulder, two-way Boulder, to do that work in advance of the bridge. So then, you know, with or without one-lane, two-lane, whatever the case may be, that bridge will be trouble when construction does commence, and this would be a great option for folks to get off of the bridge and get onto Boulder Drive as sort of a quick thoroughfare.
Now, my question to you, not too long ago, Counselors, we just redevelopment, developed Day Street, Water Street, the bridge area, millions of dollars in that area, am I right or wrong? Why wasn't it studied then to see what better traffic flow would be for North Street, Day Street, in that area, to go? Why, all of a sudden, now, we spend the money, and we don't know, I laugh, I agree with Counselor Donnelly says, we just like to blow money, this, we're going to make it beautify and make it pretty, but there's, we're not, we still get the traffic tie-up. And all of a sudden, now they're coming back. I read the report, Mass DOT, and Counselor Donnelly suggested it to take two left turns onto Water Street Bridge, take two, from Main Street, from North Street, come up to Day Street, take, have two lanes there. Why wasn't that ever done before? I'm having a hard time.
Right. So I think it's worth noting, again, in 2017, with the downtown traffic study, that looked at a couple alternatives to ease congestion. One was to have exactly what Counselor Donnelly had mentioned, two left-turn lanes on Main Street going westbound onto the Water Street Bridge. And another alternative was two left-turn lanes going northbound on Water Street onto Main Street, and then the third was traffic signalization. So what it found was traffic signalization was the most cost-effective thing we could do, and we did do. And the two left turns going on to the Water Street Bridge from Main Street westbound would be best done after the Mass DOT work on the bridge was completed, so the lanes would be widened. But they did think that would be an effective strategy for easing congestion. And in particular, some of the congestion issues we now have, not just as a result of one-lane Main Street, but as a result of CBS and the development happening in that area, more than what we'd seen before. So I think that is something that is potentially in the pipeline and would be viable once the bridge redesign is completed.
All right. I wish to make a little talk. Thank you very much.
I just want to say one thing, because I keep hearing talk about feasibility studies and why we pay for this, and we're spending our money. The vast majority of the feasibility studies that come into question regarding this issue of Main Street have been paid for by Pittsburgh State University. There is no feasibility study that comes down when we're sleeping and tucks a little, you know, nice $60,000 to $100,000 study underneath our pillow. They don't. This comes from student tuition and fees, or private philanthropic dollars from Pittsburgh State University. And I think every time we talk about these dollars being used, and why are we spending it, I mean, we have an organization that's paying for these. If we don't like the scope of the study, we can choose to ignore it and not vote on it. But we did vote on it, we considered it. So we can't then take issue with them for conducting it. They're trying to provide alternatives to us, and if we didn't want them to do it, we should tell them to stop. But we don't get to choose how they spend their money. We can't then say, we want you to do A, B, C, and D. They graciously offered to do a few of these for us, and what they They graciously offered to do a few of these for us, in what they think is going to meet the best interests of the city and themselves. But, you know, we have to get out of this mindset that we can just say, Fitchburg State University, you're gonna pay for this, 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 and this, and, you know, $500,000 later, and a student tuition and fee increase later, you know, we have all of the possible solutions, you know, for how we want to conduct our downtown. You know, it's just frustrating for me to hear that we're spending someone else's money. We have to realize that any future ones, that it's very likely that we're gonna have to pay for it ourselves. And I'm okay with that, but I think we have to understand that it's, you know, we're not just gonna keep getting free study after study after study. We have to be comfortable with, if we choose to scrap everything and start from scratch, then we have to be willing to fund it ourselves from point A through Z. Counselor Fleming.
Yes, I'm glad to hear that you are moving forward with the study, and I'm glad to hear that Fitchburg State is gonna be funding it. I just hope my son's out of there before those fees go up.
That was hypothetical, that was...
I think what I'm hearing is people are suggesting that if we go back to a two-lane, one-way on Main Street, that it's gonna somehow confuse the people of Fitchburg. They have had a two-way, I mean, a one-way, two-lane on Main Street for many, many years. I think it's gonna be a welcome change to go back to what they were already comfortable with. The one-lane Main Street is not a comfortable place for them to be. They want to go back to two-lane. They know it, they're comfortable with it, and I think people are suggesting that somehow they're gonna be confused. I don't understand how that's possible after only an 18-month study.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. I'd like to know what message we're sending. Are we trying to get people to invest on Main Street? You heard two, three people speak, that own businesses on Main Street. There are three businesses, four business owners in here that own businesses on Main Street, and pay taxes on their residence on Main Street. I don't understand why we're not listening to our taxpayers, and how can we encourage more investors if we're catering, I would say, to the nonprofits? I don't see any of them here, and most of the people that spoke from the nonprofits don't live in the city. So who is directing us? Four taxpayers on Main Street, all the way from Warren Square, all the way up to Workers' Credit Union, and they all live in the city also. It was only an hour or two ago, we were trying to help a citizen, one person that wanted a particular thing. Cost was no object. Now, we have, and these owners have all owned their business over 20 years. Economic development, that's what's gonna save Fitchburg. I don't believe the nonprofits are, I don't think public agencies are. They'll help, but that's not how we create an environment in our city. We've been focusing on the one-lane or two-lane, and the chief mentioned the crashes at North, which doubled. I guess we forget about those, because that's not on the part that's one-lane. On busy times of the day, on Blossom Street, cars are backed up to Union Street, there's 20 or 30 cars backed up because of the bottleneck, because the traffic can't get through the one-lane on Main Street, beginning at Blossom Street. So, I don't see why we are not catering to our taxpayers, our business owners, and some of these people have had empty space for 20 years, and they can't rent it, and they have a hard time selling even parts of their, so cater to the taxpayers. If you want to show that you believe in economic development, if we don't show them that, there's gonna be no new investors on Main Street. And that's what we need. Chiba just closed, that's the latest one. Before that was the Starry, and someone new was supposed to come in. But if you don't have the support of the people that really work to run a city, no new investment. So, I think it should be two-way, back to what it was, with a future goal of two-way. Thank you.
Counselor Dina Tally.
No one ever said in this room that a two-lane Main Street in one direction is gonna improve business growth. What we have been given is that what we're doing now is deterring further business growth. So I'm all for the status quo, because the new way of doing things is having the adverse effect on what we don't want to have it. Counselor Fleming took the words right out of my mouth. The argument on the city's position that this will confuse people, I find to be very interesting. Because back in 2016, when this was sold to us, not once did I ever hear anybody from community development, economic development, or the city, i.e. the mayor's office, say, regardless of the test studies, we can't go back to the way things were because it'll confuse people. And I say that, ladies and gentlemen, because there right there is an example of why I keep saying the fix was in. We can't go back because it'll confuse people. Well, if that was the case, if that's the case, was that the case two years ago when we implemented this pilot? Then we should've just implemented it permanently and not changed it. So to say that we shouldn't go back because it'll confuse people, sorry, that doesn't pass the sniff test for me. That is not what we were told two years ago. And if, and that suggests that going back to two-way, two-lane is not a good option, not an option anymore. That's not how it was sold to us, ladies and gentlemen. No one ever said to us when this was put in that we're gonna try this out for 18 months or a year, and if the data doesn't suggest we should keep it, we can't go back though because it'll confuse people. Which means the test was not really a test, it's a permanent fix. Again, I'm just going on what was sold to us. Because there were a lot of counselors in this room, some I might add weren't here, you weren't here, Mr. Skorsky either, so this isn't a criticism of you, it's the past, you know, this is what we were told to get our votes. And that's not what's happening here. Not at all. So, that's a weak argument to me, that it'll confuse people. Counselor Fleming nailed it on the head. They've been doing this for decades. What's confusing people and upsetting people in businesses is what we just did for the last 18 months. So I am all for taking it back to the way it was and going full bore on two-way. Because at least I know, going back to two-lane isn't gonna hamper business growth any more than one lane has done, in fact, one lane's done worse. So, go back to the way it was, and I don't think the people will be confused. That's the position this city has, we shouldn't have done this as a test. Because that to me suggests right there, we were never even gonna entertain going back, ever. And that's not why I voted for this test run. Thank you.
Counselor Walsh.
Just to clarify what I meant when I said I thought people might be confused, is that we had two lanes going one way, then we went to one lane going one way, now we're gonna revert back to two lanes going one way, with the idea that in the future, we're gonna be going two lanes going in two different directions. That's the part where I think the people might be confused, and that was all I meant. Thank you.
Counselor Green.
I believe two years ago, when we heard about this being a pilot program, we brought this forward because two-lane, one-way wasn't working either. We had heard for reasons of traffic was driving way too fast up Main Street, we heard that public safety was a concern because the pedestrian crosswalks were too wide. So, I, I believe that two-way, one-direction wasn't working then, that's why we chose to go with this pilot program. And, I don't know if going back to two-lanes, one-direction, are we still not going to have the cars racing up Main Street? Are we still not gonna have pedestrian safety being an issue? So what, what ultimately have we accomplished? I want to accomplish getting ultimately to two lanes in both directions, one lane traveling in each direction. That, we know works, from everything that's been studied 20 years ago, we know that that is viable. I want to move this forward with letting them tweak it how they need to tweak it, knowing that eventually we will get to two lanes, two ways, or two lane each direction. Thank you.
Mr. President, can we make a motion to amend the committee's recommendation?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to amend the committee's recommendation to revert back to two-lane, one-way Main Street and pursue the two-way Main Street option.
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend the, do we need to amend, or could it just simply be a motion? It could just be simply a motion, Counselor, you don't even need to amend. So it would be a motion...
Motion to revert back to two-lane, one-way Main Street and pursue aggressively the two-way Main Street option.
I have a motion and second, speaking on the motion. So, to hit on the point Counselor Green just spoke to, of, I remember, 18 months ago and two years ago when we started debating this, I heard the same comment of, let's move to one lane because it can't be any worse than two lanes. And now I'm hearing that same logic used in an argument that's saying that the logic that got us here failed, so let's use the same logic to revert back. So it's a bit frustrating for me. But I also look at and say, one, two-lane, one-way didn't work. So we didn't tweak it, so we went to one lane, one-way. That didn't work. So, we're saying we should just revert back and keep it as is as we pursue another option. So if we're open to change, I would say, while we have a model, should we not tweak some of the recommendations that we've been given, particularly from public safety, before we then scrap it all together? So I heard recommendations, and the vast majority of the criticism I heard of the current plan revolved around a bike lane, which we've said we can scrap tonight, essentially, flower planters, which we can scrap tonight, increase parking, we have some options to be able to increase parking, particularly if we get rid of the bike lane, or revert back some of the parking that we lost, plus potentially add more, reconfigure potentially Putnam traffic flow potentially, but at a minimum, we could certainly review the lights, the light signalization at Putnam, which we were stated before helped continue traffic flow, and that's the biggest bottleneck or the biggest area of slowdown throughout all of one lane. So I look at it and say, we have an option to tweak some of these things, particularly the biggest areas, the biggest areas of contention, and the biggest areas of criticism that I've heard focused on, instead we're saying, we'll go back to something that was probably one of the biggest areas of complaints I heard, and I know certainly when I ran for office, I think everyone who's spoken against the one-lane proposal previously then, both when I first ran for office and over my first two years as a counselor of the downtown, I had everyone say, what are we gonna do about this downtown? This isn't working, it's a drag strip, X, Y, and Z issues. And I'm not saying, trust me, I understand that one-lane Main Street did not alleviate many of these issues that you brought to me, and I'm not saying that we didn't add other issues on there. What I'm saying is reverting back doesn't address those issues you brought to me two years ago, and in many cases, it doesn't address some of the issues we have before us now. And we have some measures in place that we can fix. If we're looking at moving towards an alternative model, I get scared that we're gonna end up back in another plan, that we're gonna say, can we tweak, can we not tweak, is there enough time to tweak before we implement a two-way? So, I look at it and say, we end up right back to square one, and I'm not sure where we go from there while we pursue the two-way. Said, I have, Counselor Donnelly, you had, you had some, you were still on all this before.
I just wanted to take a little issue with that, the comment about speeding prior. According to the chief's statistics, that's a fallacy. Thank you.
Counselor Dina Tally, did you have your hand up?
Mr. President, I never said that two-lane, one-way Main Street was, I have said from my testimony, it's more successful than one-lane Main Street. When we implemented this, we knew two-lane was a problem. We now done one-lane, it's a bigger problem. So I look at it as a failing grade on both counts, one being got a 55 on the test score, the other one got a 25. So I'm trying to go back to the 55, even though I don't like it. That's why I want to go back to two-lane Main. Not because I want to go back to something that doesn't work, I want to go away from something that works less than two-lane, one-way Main Street. That's it. I'm not saying it works. I'm saying it works better than one-lane because of what the business community has said regarding how it's impacted them. It's worse than two-lane Main. Even though two-lane Main is no good, it's better than one-lane Main. Thank you.
Counselor Zarella.
I'd just like to note, this motion does meet three of my four criteria. It aims us at two directions, it does not include a bypass, it gets rid of the bike lanes and the planters, and I think that the issue of alternate traffic calming measures for pedestrian safety is something that could be worked out through DPW and community development, so I will be supporting this motion.
Said, I have a motion and second to revert one lane, to revert Main Street back to two-lane, one-way, with the ultimate goal of pursuing a two-lane, two-direction Main Street. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We have six in favor, Counselors Donnelly, Fleming, Dina Tally, Clark, Zarella, and Boishman, and an opposition. You have Counselor Squalia, Green, myself, and Counselor Walsh. Motion carries six to four. Next on the agenda, Finance Committee meeting on May 8th, Counselor Dina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met on May 1st, and, I'm sorry, May 8th, and took up the following, although I won't read them, it's a long list. All orders were adopted unanimously. I do have to ask that, one, I'm looking for it, one, I'm looking for the clerical union contract, the order number, 12018, thank you.
And 11518.
11518? Uh, 11518, no. 120?
I'm asking 11518.
Oh, okay, sorry. If we could hold out 11518 and 12018...
I'd like to hold out 12218.
So 122, 120, and 115. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report excluding 115, 120, and 12218. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, 115...
Move 11518 be adopted?
I have to recuse myself from 11518 due to financial...
Thank you, Counselor Squalia. We need a motion.
Motion to adopt 11518.
Motion and second to adopt 11518, speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Move 12218 be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion and second that 12218 be adopted. Counselor Green?
Yes. Speaking to the school department on capital improvements for the purpose of completing the audio/video upgrade at the high school, I'm speaking tonight as vice president of the Board of FATV, and I would, before that final payment get made, I would like to have Tabitha Greenless, Stephen Dauphines, Glenn Fassa, and Travik Falk be able to walk through that project to make sure that all items are completed before we give that last payment to the contract company.
Second.
There's already a motion and second on the floor. Need to be amended by...
Can the Counselor repeat that, please?
Counselor Green, if you could provide justification for your...
Sure. When the contractor who was doing the upgrades to the audio/video system at the high school... the high school, they went in and cut and removed cable that ultimately FATV would use, theater, music, the departments would use. That cable has not been replaced yet. And what I don't want to happen is the contractor to be paid and let go and us not have a way to get that cable run for the departments that need that equipment.
Mr. Solicitor, my correct and understanding, if we pass this, this isn't simply the act of cutting the check to the company. They still have to complete the work before purchasing then cuts the check. And Mr. Mayor, please?
My... I think the department head would actually have to make a request for the check to be paid.
So this is the act of saying, yes, proceed with the work. We agreed to pay this bill once the work has been completed, which it has not yet been done.
Sure. So the department head would have to submit its request for funds.
So in other words, it would be ample opportunity for Longscho and individuals or members of Pittsburgh Public Schools to ensure that the proper work was done the right way before the check is actually cut, before the invoice is filled. That's just my commentary.
Could we put a contingency on this? Or is that going down a slippery slope?
I think where this order would allow us to begin the work. So, and the payment would come after the conclusion of the work.
I would like to think or hope that Mr. Jokola and Ms. Delaney would ensure...
Perhaps we could include a communication.
Well, yeah. I mean, I'd like that Counselor Green's concern to be addressed, but I don't want to stop this from going forward.
Mayor Deanna Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Counselor, as the Assistant Superintendent, the Business Superintendent, Mr. Jokola, is he aware of this? Have we talked to anybody in the school department? Bob is the one who coordinates this kind of thing.
My only communication, again, as FATV Vice President of the Board at FATV, is that that system needs to be made whole again. You know, we need to have the capability of having that new equipment that was supposed to be in place. We need to have that.
I'm not questioning any of that. I just want to know, who was notified of this problem?
Well...
Anyone other than FATV?
Yeah, Tabitha Greenless and Stephen Dofanis have yet to be able to kind of sign off on the work that's been done, and this would complete the work.
I don't think they would sign off on it.
I want to make sure that the equipment that was upgraded is going to be able to work for those departments.
Absolutely. I agree. I agree. No question. If something was done improperly, we're going to correct that. Certainly, the contractor is going to correct it. My concern is that no one knew about this. It's the first I hear about it.
Counselor, I think your intent could be completed by virtue of both passing this order with an attached communication that I can ask, that I can work on with the city clerk, to send a communication asking both for us to look into the Pittsburgh High as well as ensure that that issue is not replicated moving forward.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
Counselor Green's thing, I think that's $20,000. I believe that's the final payment. I'm pretty sure that's the final payment. That's $20,000.
Hold it. Hold it. That's fine.
We could... Counselor Donnelly?
Go ahead.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. I just believe that if we have qualified trusted employees who should judge their judgment, and I don't believe anybody's going to get... they shouldn't get paid before the work's done. But that's normal routine.
And whether it's, whether the work has been done or not, the check still has to be cut, and we're authorizing that the work should be completed, and we should be paying for the scope of work that meets that dollar amount. My intent here in doing that would be that, you know, whether it's that our city treasurer would not, or auditor, excuse me, would not cut the check until the work. And I apologize if I botched the department and its purchasing that cuts the checks, but that ultimately the city of Pittsburgh would not cut the check until the work has been validated and signed off on. And I think we can accomplish that by sending a memo to both the school committee and Assistant Superintendent Jokola.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second to accept 12218. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. And 12018. Counselor Deanna Tally?
I recuse myself. Thank you.
12018 ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $26,700. $26,700 seem to be charged against available funds and credited to accounts as enclosed in the order.
I have a motion and second to accept 12018. Speaking on the motion, all those
in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
It's the next one, too. I'm sorry, because that's 12118 is part of the same.
We didn't hold that out.
No, that's water.
We didn't hold that out.
Motion to reconsider petition 12118?
Second.
You could reconsider on 12118.
I have a motion and second for reconsideration on 12118. There was no one who voted in opposition, correct?
Those are enterprise funds. Sorry. You don't need to pull it out.
Withdraw my second.
Withdraw my motion.
All right. The motion and second has been withdrawn for reconsideration on 12018. Next on the agenda, Public Safety Committee oral report. Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you. First, I would like to take the opportunity to apologize to the residents who made a valiant effort from Romano Ave and Canton Street to come out tonight and be at this meeting with the hopes that their agenda items would be on, well, their petitions would be on the agenda. And unfortunately, that did not happen. I take full responsibility for that. And we have made the next public safety meeting on June 5th at 6:00 PM to hear those petitions. So again, I apologize for my miscommunication on that. Petition 03918, Officer Leroy Jackson to remove the last two-metered parking spots on the easterly side of Wallace Ave at Elm Street and replace with a new loading zone for the offloading of passengers using the senior center, particularly the elderly and the handicapped. That was granted. Petition 04518, Counselors Elizabeth Walsh and Marcus Deanna Tally, along with resident Mary Fritz, to install electric speed signage or electronic yield-go-slow signage at the intersection of Rollstone Road and Brittany Lane facing traffic coming from Fifth Mass Turnpike. That was granted and being referred to Public Works for a funding source. Petition 04618, Counselors Joel Caddy and Marcus Deanna Tally, to preferably install stop signs at the intersection of Fifth Mass Turnpike and Franklin Road. However, in the event that stop signs are not deemed to be necessary, a reinstallation of the traffic mirror must be done. That was given leave to withdraw. Petition 04718, Counselor Marissa Fleming to remove the "Do Not Enter" sign at the corner of Myrtle Ave and Main Street. Also put a "No Left-Hand Turn" on Main Street onto Myrtle Ave in front of the old Harper Furniture Building. That's going to be referred to Commissioner Laxo for an engineering study. Petition 10318, Counselor Marissa Fleming to remove the "No Parking Anytime" signs arrowed left to right from in front of the corners of 111 Green Street and Morris Street and place "No Parking Here" to corner. That was given leave to withdraw. Petition 24417, Counselor Marcus Deanna Tally mandating that for any non-aviation at the Pittsburgh Municipal Airport, said event must end no later than 7:00 PM on Sunday through Thursday evenings and no later than 9:00 PM on Friday and Saturday evenings. That was given leave to withdraw. Petition 29817, Counselor Paul Boishman to have painted on the portion of Electric Ave and Franklin Road a 20 mile an hour warning on the pavement so as to slow traffic as indicated in the drawing. That was given leave to withdraw. Petition 11218, Counselors Joel Caddy and Marcus Deanna Tally to place a stop sign at the intersection of Parker Hill Drive and Briarwood Drive. That was given leave to withdraw.
Move to accept the Public Safety Report 03918 through 11218 excluding 04518.
Can we also exclude 11218?
I have a motion and second. Do I have a second? I have a motion and second to accept the Public Safety Committee oral report excluding 045 and 11218. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 04518, Counselors Elizabeth Walsh and Marcus Deanna Tally, along with resident Mary Fritz, to install electronic speed signage or electronic yield-go signage at the intersection of Rollstone Road and Brittany Lane facing traffic coming from Fifth Mass Turnpike. Matter is before the council.
Move to give 04518 leave to withdraw.
I have a motion and second to give 04518 leave to withdraw. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Squalia.
As noted for the Pittsburgh Police Department, they weren't, they did not necessarily believe that the $10,000 approximate cost of a flashing electronic sign in place of the existing newer installed signs that are reflective and in the correct location per the Uniform Traffic Manual, according to the Pittsburgh Police Department. I don't believe that... I'm going to go with the police department recommendations that might not necessarily fix our problem. And while we currently have, you know, the majority of the accidents are during snow and rain incidences along this turn, and we currently have the Public Works Department, Public Works Committee is looking at improving safety along that corner. I cannot approve this expense.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
I am merely going, I am going to vote against this motion in support of the resident at that house who has crashes occur on her property every other month, and the crashes are only getting worse. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. When I first got on the council many, many years ago, we had, one of the first things we did, Mr. Mayor, was we went down and we got that speed zone sign trap that we got, right? Do you remember? And it was just that we're looking for these mechanized things. And now we had one. It was working pretty good, but I can remember the sergeant or one of the guys saying, you know, "The reason why we don't want to have this is because some nut's going to run over with it. He's going to get cocked, and he's going to slam into it." And of course, that's what he did. That's it. Small story, but true.
I would just add to this that we're not allocating the funding. This would come out of Public Works signage accounts, and if it required additional allocation of funds that would, you know, come before the mayor and then trigger if, at the mayor's blessing, an order before the council. So this act wouldn't necessarily allocate the funding to do so. It would just move it one step along the way to public, to the Public Works Commissioner at that point. That's it. Counselor Boishman.
Would you say the funding's going to come out of the DPW? I thought when they take money out of there, it comes out of chapter 90, chapter 90.
I could be wrong. My understanding from both the chief and my past experience was that all cautionary signage comes out of the DPW signage account, not out of, not out of public safety funding.
All right.
Said, I have a motion and second to give leave to withdraw to 04518. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Zarella.
I think if this is causing not just one, but multiple accidents on the property of a resident, then that's something that needs to be aggressively addressed. It's different from, you know, an accident cluttering up the street outside someone's house. This is private property that's being damaged by activity on a public street, and we may not actually have legal liability for it, but I think we have a responsibility for it anyway.
I have a motion and second to give leave to withdraw to 04518. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Of giving leave, I have Counselors Squalia, Donnelly, Clark, and Boishman in favor of giving leave. All those opposed? We have Counselors Green, Deanna Tally, Fleming, Kusmerick, Walsh, and Zarella in opposition. The motion does not carry.
4518 be accepted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 04518. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor, please raise your hands. We have seven in favor.
Hang on.
Was it seven?
Someone changed their vote.
Seven in favor. All those opposed? Counselors, we have three in opposition. Counselor Squalia, Donnelly, and Boishman. Motion carries. 11218, Counselors Joel Caddy and Marcus Deanna Tally to place a stop sign at the intersection of Parker Hill Drive and Briarwood Drive.
Move 11218 be accepted to place the stop sign.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I do not have a second, Counselor.
Move to give 11218 leave to withdraw.
Second.
I have a motion and second to give 11218 leave to withdraw. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. Counselor Deanna Tally. Motion carries. Public hearings. 13818, Pittsburgh Gas and Electric, Unitil, to install a new pole location approximately 190 feet north of the Oak Hill Lane as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open. I'd like to ask the representative from Unitil to join us. Good evening. You could just state your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Jim D. with Unitil. And I guess a little background. If you've been out to Oak Hill Road and Pratt Road area, you've probably seen some line construction crews replacing poles. We're building a new circuit from Beach Street Substation down to 1 Oak Hill Road. There's a large customer that's gone in at 1 Oak Hill Road. So we're upgrading poles and giving them a dedicated circuit for that business. So we do need a, the reason we need that pole that's going in there is we need a clean pole to put a switch on, which is going to tie two circuits together. So we, there was no poles that were clean enough because they're all either feeding a business or have transformers on them or two circuits. So this pole will allow us to have a circuit tie between two circuits down in that area. And that's the purpose of that pole.
Questions from Counselors? Counselor Boishman.
Happens to be in my ward, and I work right up the street.
Okay.
My problem is the 60-foot poles. 60 foot. Started off with 35, 40. Now we're up to 60 feet. How can you go? Is the sky the limit?
No, we just go according to the construction standards. You know, if you, you need so much, you know, space between circuits, between electric and communications. So we're just, you know, we go by our construction standards. And if we're near buildings and, you know, and then we're putting transformers and everything else on these poles, you need, you know, more height. Most of the poles out there now are like 50-foot poles. So I think we're, we may be going up to 55s out in that area.
Now, my other question to you is that the, this line you're putting in, this is a more powerful line, isn't it? It's more voltage.
It's going to be dedicated. It's going to be 13,800 volts, like the other one.
13,800. I was going to ask you about EMF, electronic magnitude.
Right.
How is that going to relate to the neighborhood? Because some of these, some of that line's going right by four families and three families.
Right. Yeah, I don't really know what kind, you know, what, anything about how much EMF is coming off of those lines. I've been told it's more from the microwave than it is from these lines.
Now, let me ask you another question, too. Well, you're talking about 1 Oak Hill Road. Now, if they're coming down Oak Hill Road heading towards River Street, I noticed you put a pole in their property. put a pole in their property right there. Is there a particular reason why you put that one pole in their property? Are you going over?
Yeah.
Line? You're not going to go underground?
There is going to be, eventually, there's going to be a second feed to that building, and it's going to go across the street overhead and then underground off of that pole. Yep.
Can I honestly tell you something? But this is me as a person that looks out my window. I think I'm licking at Christmas trees with big Venetian blinds, really. I think it's a shame. I really do. I feel bad for the people that are living right there in the four families, and they look out their windows and right up their, right at their eyesight is a high tension wire right there. I think what Unitil should do is give them all extension cords so they can pick them up, so they can lick out their windows. I'm not a fan of poles, as you can probably tell.
Yeah, I know.
All right, with me.
Councillor Zarella.
So just to address councillor Boishman's concern, it's my understanding at least, you're not actually running new lines per se, just creating a new connection for the same lines basically that are already there?
There is going to be a new circuit that's coming from Beach Street Substation, you know, down Pratt Road, down Oak Hill Road.
But it's the same kind of lines that are.
Yeah, right, correct.
Okay, so in other words, the whatever EMF concerns may or may not exist will not be increasing from what currently exists.
That's right.
That he doesn't know of.
Any other questions from councillors? That said, is there anyone? Councillor Squallia.
So there is an existing thirteen point eight thousand volt line?
Correct. Right.
And will there be, now be two?
There will be, yep.
Okay.
The one that's there now serves all the residents in that area, so it isn't large enough to handle the load from one Oak Hill Road. So that's why we need that, you know, dedicated circuit from Beach Street Substation.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Do I have anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. Matters now before the council.
Move one thirty-eight eighteen be accepted.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept one thirty-eight eighteen. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. Councillor Boishman? Motion carries by a vote of nine to one. One thirty-nine eighteen, Fitchburg Gas and Electric Unitil to install a new pole location approximately one hundred and five feet east of Beach Street as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open. Mr. D.
Yeah, this is just a second part of the circuit that we're running down there. We're coming out of the Beach Street Substation, getting onto Pratt Road, and there's a gap between the poles of like, I think it's three hundred and twenty feet or something like that. So we needed to put a midspan pole in there to, you know, shorten the spans in that area. So it's just kind of a midspan pole to shorten the span and the sag and the lines for the new circuit.
Questions or comments from councillors? Councillor Boishman? I was just, I was taking a flyer there.
Hope it's not in front of your house.
There's no way we can put those lines on the ground, huh? With that new pole on Beach Street?
You didn't disappoint, thank you. Councillor Squallia.
So this new pole will be twenty-seven A on Pratt Road?
Correct.
And this is a midspan between the pole twenty-seven and twenty-eight on Pratt Road?
Correct.
And the, the map that you provide has existing overhead conductors, but it's, it's, it kind of goes down Beach Street to Pratt. What is that midspan pole? Is there going to be a new line that's going to be running between twenty-seven and twenty-eight?
Yes, it is, yep. Right, right now, there's no wire is going between, you know, we're coming out of the substation, going to twenty-seven, and then from twenty-seven to twenty-seven A, and then to twenty-seven A to twenty-eight. So the lines you see that are going through Park Hill, Park, Park Hill Park there, that's like a.
The eight-two-one-four, eight-two-one-three?
Yeah, that's a sub, that goes over to, yeah, Flag Barn Substation. So that's just a sub transmission line.
So.
But we do have another circuit that comes out that you may be looking at on Pratt Road, comes out of, comes up Beach and then goes down Pratt.
Right, so I'm just confused on your map as to what this twenty-seven A, which line that's holding. You have your Beach Street number one that, your substation up in the north side of the sheet, correct?
Right.
And so your, is your new, your new line's running from that substation?
Yeah, it's going to come out of the substation, go over to twenty-seven.
On Beach?
On Pratt Road.
Twenty-seven, oh, on Pratt, okay.
And then it's going to go to twenty-seven A, and then over to twenty-eight, and it's going to go on top of the circuit that's already there. So it's going to be a double circuit down Pratt Road and then down Oak Hill Road. But yeah, it's hard to picture.
The new lines aren't shown?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Good. Thank you.
Councillor Boishman.
Question for you, for you here. I notice when you guys were dragging that line, you're not just putting the line, I notice it's wrapped, you get it wrapped around like a metal. It's going like this, because I saw the guy doing it. So it's not just a regular line, it's got a metal, then your, your line's going over it.
Like a roller?
Yeah.
Got a roller? That's how we install the lines.
I know, but there's a metal line, and there's a metal between the line itself. You got your line wrapped around like that as you're pulling out, because they seen it. They seen the line, they said, oh, it's getting fat and big, too. So this is, oh, you know, it's a lot bigger than what a regular line.
Yeah, it's at the, it might be secondary. They were running secondary down Oak Hill Road the other day, which to feed all the new houses, I mean, not the new houses, but to feed the houses. I didn't, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
All right. Okay, let's go ahead and ask.
Do I have anyone else wishing to ask questions? Is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. Matters now before the council.
Move one thirty-nine eighteen be accepted.
I have a motion and second to accept one thirty-nine eighteen. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Orders finance, one forty-one eighteen, order that there be in hereby is appropriated sum of nine thousand five hundred dollars, same to be charged against available funds and credited to DPW.
Move one forty-one eighteen through one forty-eight eighteen be sent to finance.
A motion and second to send one forty-one eighteen up to and including one forty-eight eighteen to finance. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Budget orders, councillors?
Move all budget orders go, be sent to council as a whole?
Be sent to the budget hearing on May twenty-second.
Yes.
Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. And note, the budget documents are here, councillors, you can pick them up from the city clerk after the meeting, from the city clerk.
Yeah, when?
Immediately after the, the meeting, tonight.
Oh.
I can take a recess and you can get yours now if you, you can start handing them up. But they are ready, and I believe these will go online if they aren't already. I believe tomorrow, tomorrow. Orders other, one fifty-seven eighteen, order that the city of Fitchburg sells one sixty-seven, one sixty-nine, sorry, sixty-seven and sixty-nine Myrtle Avenue to Joshua Naughton, trustee of one thirty-seven Greens Real Estate Trust, as approved where the city's sideyard sales program is outlined in the enclosed order reference petition, two thirty-five fifteen. One fifty-eight eighteen, order authorizing the city of Fitchburg to obtain conservation restriction on a parcel of land in Ashby known as Crocker Property as outlined in the enclosed order. And one fifty-nine eighteen, order authorizing the city of Fitchburg to purchase a certain parcel of land in Ashby known as the Cramp property located on Piper Road in Ashby to be funded through grant monies owner donation division of water supply funds as outlined in the enclosed order. I believe all of those were, is it correct? City property?
Move one fifty-seven eighteen through one fifty-nine eighteen to be referred to the city property committee.
Second.
But were they already referred? So this one's referencing petition two thirty-five.
The city treasurer is here, she may.
Madam treasurer, am I correct?
That petition refers to the original decision to.
Right, this simply, this simply just needs to be accepted, correct? And one fifty-eight eighteen and one fifty-nine eighteen, have those already been voted on in city property? No, okay, so those, okay. So I'd be asking for one fifty-seven eighteen to be accepted. That, that has already been voted on by the council. It's already been through the city property committee.
Mr. President?
To allocate to sideyard sales.
Sorry, I apologize, to allocate to sideyard sales.
Not to allocate to this particular circumstances.
Okay. All right. So one fifty-seven eighteen should be allocated to the sideyard sales program.
Move one fifty-seven eighteen be allocated to the sideyard sales program.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send one fifty-seven eighteen to the sideyard sales program. Speaking on the motion?
Just wanted to.
Councillor Zarella.
Sideyard Sales approved it already according to this.
Right.
Yeah, so the, the order that we.
Okay. That's what I was, okay. All right. So.
So back to my original.
Councillor Squallia, I have your original motion, and do I have a second to send one fifty-seven up to and including one fifty-nine eighteen to the city property committee?
Speaking on the motion?
Speaking on the motion, councillor Dina Tally.
I'm sorry, is aware, they were, that the agenda sent by the city clerk with the packet doesn't have the next page, but the one that was sent by Ms. Kees has the full agenda. So some of us were opening a different file.
Understood.
Just.
And councillor, just for your edification, it's the agenda that gets publicly posted and is kind of the, you know, the packet is obviously for our benefit, we'll.
No, I know, I'm just.
Fix that, certainly, but.
Okay.
Acknowledged.
Yeah.
I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. One twenty-six eighteen, an ordinance amending chapter three, article fourteen, section three dash two sixty-seven of the city code by striking the word nine and inserting eleven in its place regarding disability commission, reference petition three nineteen seventeen, final reading.
Move one twenty-eight eighteen be sent to its third and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send one twenty-six eighteen to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained and advertised. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. One sixty eighteen, an ordinance to amend the table of principles uses by amending sections one eighty-one, three thirteen C, fourteen dash A, as follows, fourteen A seasonal outdoor dining update chart with Y for LII and CNA zones, reference petition one oh two eighteen, first reading.
Motion one sixty dash eighteen be sent to its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send one sixty eighteen to its first reading. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Move one sixty-one eighteen and one sixty-two eighteen be sent to their respective committees.
I have a motion and second to send one sixty-one and one sixty-two eighteen to their respective committees. Speaking on the motion, councillor Zarella.
I'd just like to note that Mr. Palmerow has been before, in case I don't make it to the public safety committee, Mr. Palmerow has been before the zoning board several times on this matter and has always provided both an incredibly thorough plan and an immaculate property every time we've had him in front of us.
Thank you. Sir, unfortunately, there's not an opportunity for you to speak at this time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So this will be referred to the public safety committee on June, June fifth, is that correct, councillor Green? Wonderful. I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion and three one eighteen be moved from table to consideration by the council.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And second to remove zero thirty-one eighteen and put it before the council. Speaking on the motion, councillor Green.
I would like to just note that.
Councillor Green, this is simply to allow us to then discuss it and deliberate on it.
Oh, perfect.
Okay. So I have a motion and seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Zero thirty-one eighteen is now before you. Speaking on the, councillor Walsh.
I would like to make a motion to amend thirty-one eighteen to strike the words Blossom Street from one eighty-one point sixty-five forty-six and insert in its place the intersection of Holt Street and Summer Street. And this would effectively change the designation as was requested by Fitchburg State University.
Second.
I have a motion and second to strike the word blossom and replace and put in its place the intersection with Summer and Holt. Speaking on the motion to amend, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Please raise your hand. Councillor Squallia in opposition.
I'm against it.
Okay, councillor Boishman in opposition as well. So motion carries eight to two. The amended petition is now before you. Speaking on the motion, councillor Green.
I would like to just note that the amendments that we got to in the last meeting were only for this section one out of section five on this ordinance. So we have yet to entertain items two, three, four and five on this ordinance.
Those, the ordinance is written in before us, is it not? Solicitor Pousatary?
The entire, the entire ordinance is written.
So we have the entire ordinance before us and we can, we can vote on it whether or not it was, it was changed further. The ordinance is before us and, as it appeared on both the agenda and the, and the packet.
Yes.
So, so councillor Green, you're right in that there were no further changes, I believe, to those, those sections, but those are, those are before us for consideration at this time. Councillor Zarella.
Yes, I'd just like to note in reference to that, the reason we had debated section one so many times, but not the remaining ones, is because when we initially debated all five sections, we only made, we only recommended alterations to section one, so we were waiting on those alterations from the city solicitor. The others are substantially as we already debated them and I believe recommended their approval.
And just for everyone's edification, the city solicitor is showing me the document that encapsulates the changes at every iteration with the specific changes called out that were made. Those changes appeared in our packet from two weeks ago as well as are reflected on this, this agenda. Councillor Green.
Can I just ask then on subsection number two, to amend the definitions of RMD, MMD and MMM in section one eighty-one point ten, to remove a requirement that the operator be a nonprofit entity as follows? Where, where in my packet of the revised version, where do I find that?
Is that where we defined it under?
No, I think we removed the requirement of, I don't see it as a, as a change.
Councillor Green, just one moment.
No, because the RMD refers to the medical question of the.
So that would be correct for us to remove?
Yes, you do not want to have it as a nonprofit.
So you're looking for a further amendment to section two, one eighty-one, six fifty-three, sub clause two, removing, sorry, we removed, just removed that entire sub clause two?
No, that it, the, the reference.
The reference to nonprofit.
Correct.
Okay.
It is removed, madam.
Okay.
So you're saying that was done or?
That was done.
That was already done?
Yep.
Okay. So no further actions necessary?
And I'm glad, yeah.
Okay.
So it's, it's there in the, what, the last page? Well, of the.
Councillor Green, I just want to make sure you're all set before.
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Dina Tally?
You must, the chair, councillor Walsh, your amendment was for one eighty-one six five four six to strike Blossom Street.
And replace with it the intersection of Holt and Summer Street.
So your, your proposal is from Holt and Summer Street all the way to Main and Prospect, restricted?
Correct.
Got it? Just, just making sure. Thank you.
That said, I have a, I believe a motion and second as amended, no?
No.
No.
No, okay, all right.
Motion to approve as amended?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve as amended. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, one in opposition, Counselor Donnelly. Motion carries, nine to one.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we adjourn. Thank you, counselors.